Go ahead and, and I think get started and, and I'm sure David will, will join us when he's available here. So I will call the meeting of the city council, the city of Hillsborough, Kansas to order. As we do with all of our meetings, we start with public comments and I will turn it back to our moderator, Mr. Styles, if there are any public comments.
So normally how we ask people to do public comments is if you go to the participation button and you can raise your hand in there. There's Dave coming in. Or if you unmute your microphone in an orderly way, we can also do it that way. So I know we have just a handful of folks here for, uh, from the public. So I would open it up to any of those. I see we have Rod Funk and Commissioner Garing. If, if you have a comment today, we can open it up to you too.
If this is, if, if there is anything that, that anybody wants the council to, to be addressed upon, this is the time to do it because once we get into our agenda, there will be no further public comment at that point. So anybody that does have a desire on any of the topics that are on the agenda, please speak up. Okay. I'm not hearing any, anybody ready to make any public comments at this time. So we will close our public comment period. And we will move on to agenda item C, which is approval of minutes from our one, five, 21 regular meeting. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes? Are there any questions, corrections or, or comments regarding the minutes?
Yeah, I have a correction.
Okay.
On the Elcon invoices, I think I had abstained and I don't think that that was on there. So.
Okay. You definitely did abstain. So yeah, that correction will make that correction. Were there any other corrections that needed to be made? Hearing none and accept the motion to approve the minutes with the correction that Councilman Garing abstained on the Elcon invoices vote. Would somebody care to make that motion?
I got motion.
Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Garing seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. David, you're muted.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. So motion carries four oh. We'll now move on to approval of vouchers. We have manual checks in the amount of eighty nine thousand, five hundred twenty eight dollars, fifty four cents. Computer checks in the amount of nineteen thousand, seven hundred eighty five dollars, twenty two cents for a total voucher approval of one hundred nine thousand, three hundred thirteen dollars, seventy six cents. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers? Were there any questions regarding those vouchers? Hearing none and accept a motion to approve the vouchers for payment. Councilman Driggers moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Lowen seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We'll now move into our business section and our E1 item is annual police report forfeiture funds. And I'll turn it over to you, Matt, to get us started.
Yeah, I don't know if John is John Hubert from police department is on today. I don't know if John, if you wanted to jump in and provide a little information.
Yeah. So two thousand nineteen, um, starting July first. Um, all asset forfeitures, either cash seizures or property seized by any agency within the state of Kansas is required to report all forfeitures and seizures to the state of Kansas. And as part of that, um, is the creation of the law enforcement trust fund that occurred back in July. So we had to amend our two thousand nineteen, uh, asset forfeiture reporting to the state to include forfeited funds from a two thousand and eighteen case. Therefore, uh, changing our starting balance for this year. For this year, um, we had, uh, three additional cash seizures and forfeited property.
And so also the expenses that get paid out of there are attorney fees to the Marion County Attorney. They get a portion of any of our forfeiture money. That's part of the state law for that. So uh, you'll see on that bottom of that report, that's what that reflects on that.
Um, you may also see, uh, in the expenditures, um, one for assets sharing, which goes to the sheriff's department for the utilization of a K nine. In one of the cases, that's kind of a standard, um, sharing of assets when we have other agencies involved in a case.
So John, what, what will happen to, I understand cash is cash, but what happens to property forfeitures?
So property forfeitures such as, uh, physical property vehicles, so forth. That can be turned in, um, or returned to the department for department use or can be, sold at auction. Uh, usually a lot of agencies use Purple Wave, uh, for the auction. Um, and then any proceeds coming from that, um, after, um, auction fees and, uh, so forth, then get deposited as cash into the, uh, special law enforcement trust fund. There is only one exception to the sale of property, um, and that is firearms. Uh, and there is one listed firearm that was forfeited in a case this year. That firearm, we have two options with that. We either retain that as property of the police department for department use. And I, or I should say three options, uh, or we transfer it to another agency for their use. So, uh, the Kansas Bureau of Investigation, um, the sheriff's department, Marion Police Department's, uh, just another agency, law enforcement agency, uh, or mandated by state statute is that we destroy the firearm. So, um, we are not allowed to sell a firearm to the general public or an auction. We are not allowed to trade them, um, as a compensation towards the purchase of other firearms and so forth. So it's either retained by the agency or destroyed.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions for Officer Hubert or Mr. Styles? Hearing none, we appreciate, uh, the report. Thank you, John, for your work on this. And, uh, I don't know that there's any action. I, I don't believe that needs to be taken at this point. Correct?
No, there's no action that needs to be taken with this. It's just a, a required annual report.
Well, again, I appreciate it. Officer Hubert, thank you very much and we really appreciate your service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to agenda item E two, which is extension of face covering ordinance. Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. Um, so what we have here is, is an ordinance thirteen twenty four, which actually replaces thirteen twenty two, which we passed on, on November twenty fourth of last year. Uh, it would take, if approved, it would take effect on the twenty seventh. Uh, the previous ordinance ends on the twenty sixth, so you wouldn't have any overlap there. Uh, we've got the, the language in it is completely identical to the previous ordinance. So everything that we had in the previous ordinance is exactly as is in this ordinance, except for the date. Uh, we did change the date to March twenty third, twenty twenty one, which is about fifty five days. Uh, a little short of sixty days on that extension. So, um, you know, that, that, that's kind of where we're at on this. I know some other jurisdictions have gone further than that, but we felt like sixty days was probably the best, uh, most prudent choice. And then we can kind of reevaluate at that time. Of course, if you run into a situation where you need to, to make changes to that, you can always, um, can always make those changes via ordinance. But, uh, with the way things have been going, um, you know, the case count hasn't really gone down. We've had the Thanksgiving, a post Thanksgiving day surge, and then we've got a post Christmas surge. We're sort of right in the middle of that. Um, the, the seven reports we've had since Christmas, there's been a hundred and eighty eight cases. We didn't get one yesterday because of the holiday. Um, so we're not real sure what, what it was yesterday. But about twenty three percent of the total cases since the beginning of the pandemic have been in those last seventeen days. So, uh, it's clearly not going down. Um, so you know, that, that's something to consider. Um, from an enforcement side, we really haven't had too many issues with it. We did get one formal complaint. Uh, we sent the police department out there. They took, they, uh, to, it was a retailer. And, uh, by the time they arrived, the, the group was in compliance. So it wasn't a situation where, uh, they had a lot of, um, you know, non-compliance there. It was just one of those things that, um, once they were told, they, they pretty well got, got to work on it and it wasn't really an issue from there. But other than that, that's the only one we've not issued any citations, um, very few warnings. We have given out masks. We did give masks out and signage to any business who wanted it. Um, and any citizen who's come in, we've given a mask to for that matter. So, uh, we still have a few of those and if we needed to, we could order more obviously, but, um, you know, I don't think it's been terribly detrimental from a financial perspective. You know, I think, I think the change in administration, presidential administrations at the federal level will see some additional things coming down. We've been hearing, hearing about, uh, potentially receiving some, some more aid. So who knows what that would look like, if that's even a thing. Um, but we are, you know, gathering up all those expenses and making sure that we have those in, in place. So, um, that, that's kind of what it is. It's a pretty straightforward, just an extension with, it will replace the current, um, ordinance once it's passed. So, uh, fifty five days.
Okay. Are there any questions? Any comments? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to approve face mask ordinance thirteen twenty four.
I got motion.
Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second? Councilman Lowen seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll pull the council, Councilman McCarty.
Yes.
Councilman Driggers.
Yes.
Councilman Garing.
No.
Councilman Lowen.
Yes.
Ordinance thirteen twenty four passes with a vote of three to one. Okay. We'll now move on to, uh, item number three, reimbursement request number thirty, KDHE water project.
Uh, thank you, sir. So this is the, uh, final reimbursement request. So we're paying out this, this will allow us to close it out. Uh, there's a little bit of time left on there and it's, uh, been dedicated to updating our mapping. So that's what, what the final request will be for, um, make sure that it gets paid on that. And then we'll be able to close out this project. So we're looking forward to, to having that completely finished and, and being able to turn the page on it. So, um, just asking for final approval on that. And then we'll get this project wrapped up.
So the key word here is final?
Final, one hundred percent final.
Okay. Everybody heard that, right? Okay. All right. Are there any questions for Mr. Styles? Hearing none and accept a motion to approve KDHE, uh, reimbursement request number thirty on the water project in the amount of nine thousand, four hundred and twenty one dollars, eighty seven cents.
I moved.
Councilman Driggers moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Garing seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. KDHE reimbursement request number thirty is approved. We'll now move on to agenda item E four, which is an RFQ for engineering services. Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So what you have in front of you is a request for qualifications for city engineering, engineering services. Um, we currently use EBH and I think from a quality perspective, we get a pretty good job from them. Uh, we just don't really have any formal arrangement with them. And so one of the things that, uh, you know, I think we should, should look at as we evaluate all these relationships is putting in guardrails as far as what we can and can't be charged for and kind of what that relationship needs to look like. Um, and I think it's good every so often to take it out and, and recruit some, some bids or look at other engineering firms to, to make sure that we're, we're not missing out on something. Um, you know, it, we, we, like I said, I think from a quality perspective, EBH has done a pretty decent job, uh, but I think it's just time to, to reevaluate some of those, uh, relationships. And I think we've got some things moving into the future that we, uh, it wouldn't be bad to have another opinion on potentially. Or at least, you know, have, have some other options to look at, consider. Um, so, you know, this, this kind of lays it out, what would happen with this is we would release this information out to whoever's, uh, whoever's contacted us in the past. Uh, we've got a pretty long list of folks who provide engineering services, city engineering services. Um, and then we'd also publish it as far as if anybody wanted to find, find it on our website or, uh, we can go as far as putting it into the local papers, but I'm not sure how much circulation or how much depth we get out of that. Typically it works best when you can just send it directly to, to folks in the, in the list for engineering services, people who are known to do city engineering services. So, um, you know, I think it's probably just time to evaluate those relationships and put this out there and see what, what kind of response we would get back. Uh, we've got it set up to be open. Um, if it, if it gets approved, we would open it up starting tomorrow. Uh, we'd send it out or Thursday, we would send it out, um, kind of have a list of all the things we want to look for and how we would evaluate those and the basis for those awards. And then they would be due back to us on February tenth, so that we could have an opportunity to review those. Uh, we would grab a section of city staff, most likely, uh, Morgan from the water department. I think she can handle water and sewer side of the table and they probably use the most engineering services out of everybody here at the city. Um, and then I'd open it up to, you know, anybody else who would be interested in reviewing it. We've, I've done it in the past where we've had, uh, you know, council members do that. A lot of the times they kind of look like deer in headlights with some of those things, just because they can be super technical. Um, so, you know, I'd be open to, to sharing it with the council as far as the review piece. Um, but if you're okay with us doing it in-house, uh, we can do that too. And then maybe have some engineering interviews. That would be, uh, another option to have people come in and give proposals to us, um, as a council, so that we can kind of take a look at them and make a final decision. Um, the way that this would work, at least the way that it's written, is not that they would have a, like a retainer situation, uh, but that they would have an opportunity to basically give us a set schedule of how they would charge for certain services and products. Um, and that would just be kind of the guardrails again, uh, of how that all would work in the future when we have a project or we have something that we need, uh, from them. So, um, it's just a way to kind of formalize those relationships and see if anybody's interested to, to provide those services.
Okay. Are there any questions? Is there any direction that, uh, that the council would care to give regarding the process? Or are you comfortable with the processes Mr. Styles has laid it out? Renee? You okay with it?
Okay. Yeah, I think so.
Okay. David?
Yeah.
Okay. Byron?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay. Um, I guess some of this is going to depend on the responses that we get in terms of, uh, presentations to the council. But I'm thinking if the, if there is a, uh, if we get enough, um, responses where there's, there's maybe a finalist group of say, a top one or, or two to three, uh, firms, you know, that might be appropriate to bring to the council for a presentation. We could do a work session, you know, around those presentations. But, uh, you know, if it, if we're not getting a lot of responses, then, then I guess we'll have to make an adjustment at that point. But that would be my recommendation.
Yeah, that, that's, that's fair. I think that makes a lot of sense. We don't want to overwhelm, overwhelm everybody with them. But at the same time, if we need, we need to be flexible in case we don't get a ton of response.
Part of this, uh, part of this that, uh, that you maybe haven't touched on is, is it's not just, uh, the, the financial guardrails, if you will, but it's also, uh, a timely response guardrail as well that's part of this. Because, you know, on occasion we, we do struggle with, with, with timeliness. And, uh, that's impacted some projects since I've been mayor and, and, uh, I think that that's certainly going to be part of the, at least the criteria I want to see us looking at as well is, is, uh, you know, thoroughness is great, but, uh, and, and, but if it's not timely, um, I've heard, uh, you know, people have in history have said, you know, a, a, a good plan executed today is better than the perfect plan executed tomorrow. So sometimes timeliness is, 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 is value. So are there any other questions or comments regarding this? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to, uh, to authorize, uh, city administrators, styles to sub, send out the RFQ for engineering services for the city of Hillsborough, Kansas.
I got motion.
Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Driggers seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Um, Mr. Styles, we're on agenda item E five, KPP financed electric meters project.
Thank you, sir. So what, uh, KPP has been doing is, is working with all the member cities about upgrading your electrical infrastructure to what's called, um, AMI or automated metering infrastructure. It's, it's a fixed base system where, you know, you basically push a button in the office and it can read everything in town, uh, which is a huge, huge time savings, uh, for, for a lot of different things. Uh, I don't know that we're quite there for what that would be. And of course, the price tag is a little staggering at two hundred and seventy nine thousand. Um, but what we can do is invest in the automated meter reading system or an AMR system, which is what we have on, uh, water system. Um, and we do have some, some of our, our electric meters right now, about thirty percent of the town is set up to, to be able to do that as well. Uh, the cool part about that is that, you know, we can read them remotely, uh, with this potential upgrade. And then, um, also we have the ability to disconnect people remotely too. So, uh, it's a situation where we run into different, different things with different people. We've had some hostile folks, as you can imagine with electrical, um, it happens. Uh, we've also had, you know, situations with animals, um, you know, dogs were not able to get up to the house, that kind of thing. Um, so that having that adds a lot of safety to, to our ability to do that function of our job. Um, you know, so this, this is kind of a middle grade step to get us all the way up into a functioning AMR system where we can just drive by like we do with our water meters and collect that data. Um, I don't know that we're really ready to make that jump to the AMI. Um, that adds a lot of cool features and it's got a lot of, it's got a lot of software components to it. Uh, a little bit more that can go wrong. Um, you know, the data is great for people who are on the system, but I don't know that right now we have people clamoring for that. Um, but making this upgrade puts us in a position that in the future, should we want to do that, uh, move up to a different system, we could do so. Um, everything with this census water, or the census metering system is able to basically flip the switch. If we want to make that upgrade in the future to an AMI, uh, we can just do it. It's, it's pretty straightforward at that point. Um, the biggest cost then is when you add into the fixed base system, you have to add a fixed base tower. So, um, you know, I don't think we're quite ready for that, but we do have the opportunity to use KPP to finance, uh, the upgrades for the rest of those meters, about seventy percent. Initially, we had an estimate of a hundred and ten. Um, I asked Randy Jantsch in our electrical department to get with Corin Main, who's the dealer for census, uh, and work through the remainder of our, what we call our books, um, how we read electrical meters to that, that seventy percent. Originally we thought it was about a hundred and ten, uh, but they came back with a hundred and eighty seven thousand dollar quote, which is pretty significantly different. Um, I did tell them to err on the high side so that there, there could be some room in there. That's things that we don't necessarily need at the end of the day. Um, but I think it's, I, I think it's still a pretty good investment for us. And when we can, we're able to use KPP to finance it, which is good for a couple of reasons. Um, it doesn't add anything to our long-term debt. We basically just, they add a fee to our, uh, existing power bill. And so it comes in and we just pay it through that, um, because they're grouping together a lunch, a bunch of projects, including ours potentially. Um, it's a situation where they can get a much better rate, uh, than what we could do for borrowing that small amount of money. If we were going to borrow it, um, we get to, to do that. And then we also reap all the benefits of it now versus the system which we have been doing is kind of as we have time and effort and money to do it. We, we've just been kind of doing them. Um, that's why we're only at thirty percent. So, uh, getting them all in and, and making that a priority, we can reap those benefits and, uh, be able to, to use KPP's financing, uh, to get, get some of the advantages with that. So I, I, despite the cost going up to from a hundred and ten to one eighty seven, I would still recommend that we look at doing this. Um, we will only pay for the amount that we actually end up spending. Um, so I'm hoping that this is, uh, when I said the high side, that they really went for the high side. Uh, but the, the deal with that is that once you put in the high number, you can't go higher. You can always go lower, but you can't go higher. So, um, my recommendation was to, to move forward with that. Um, and included in KPP's financing, uh, I think it would be a, a, a good next step for our infrastructure.
Any questions for Mr. Styles?
Matt, I see that you, we don't have the financing, how that would best definitively work out with KPP. But do you know about how long they're trying to stretch that out for?
I don't have the terms yet. I was hoping to get a little bit more information. They have, we have a KPP board meeting on, uh, Thursday. And so, yeah, uh, so we'll have some more information at that point. Um, we, we have to kind of make it a thumbs up or thumbs down if we want to be included at, at that point. Um, in their discussion to make sure that that's a part of the bond issue. We, we still have an opportunity to opt out if the terms come back to be unfavorable. So, um, there's still a couple of decision points in here, but we have to, we have to either give them the tentative yes or, or a hard no and, and leave. So, but I'm.
I'm thinking.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead, Lou.
I, I'm thinking that it's probably a ten year or, or more type of bond issue because there's pretty significant items being rolled together to be included in these bonds. And such as, uh, a new, uh, transformer for, uh, for a member. There's a battery project that's being done up in Minneapolis. That's, uh, we just signed contracts on just under two million dollars. So there's quite a bit of, quite a bit of it in there. So there's quite a bit of quite a bit of it in there. I it may be a 20 year, 20 year bond, but that's kind of, it's going to be at least a 10 year bond for sure.
Are there other KPP members doing the AMR at with this bond?
Oh, yes. There's several. I would say at least a half a dozen. And and they're all the the thing about it is that they're they're doing it at different levels. There are some cities that are going full AMI. And there are others that are doing partial and some are doing AMR like we're doing. There's a variety. It's kind of a mix, if you will, and it and it really is based on the individual members' needs. Some of the members are fairly small and some are some are larger. I think City of Augusta, I believe, is looking at at more of an AMI program than an AMR program. So and, you know, their size dictates that it's a pretty good sized pretty good sized project for them. Are there any other questions? Is the council prepared to make a motion to authorize the to of Hillsborough to to join in the KPP program for bonding for the completion of our AMR electric meter process?
I got motion.
Okay, Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Driggers seconds. Is there any further discussion?
That would we expect another motion to come up to ask for it actually to
For final approval? Yeah, this I think, yes. Yes, it would. Discussion regarding the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Styles, agenda item E six Marion County EMS proposal.
Okay, thank you, sir. So the mayor and I have been kind of working on this project. Of course, we've been talking about the the EMS building for over a year now as part of working with Marion County on it. So one of the things that we we were attending the county commission meeting last week and found there was a couple objections to to what what our initial proposal was, was a 40 year lease. They're looking at, you know, based on what we know, the Dollar General building over there on Western Heights Circles is a potential option for that. So under that situation, they would have to, you know, I think they would actually still have to lease it for a few years before they could purchase it. But there'd be a remodeling situation, quite a bit of square footage in that building. Obviously, we would prefer to have that be for retail, kind of fits more into that area. But, you know, they didn't take any action on that. And so that left us with an opportunity to kind of revisit our proposal. And so rather than looking at a 40 year lease, one of the issues was the lease itself. I think they would prefer to buy the property. So from our perspective, a 40 year lease is is roughly equivalent to selling the property as long as we can have a first right of refusal. That if they ever decided not to to continue operating that that facility, we could purchase that back from them at whatever whatever cost that was at that time, you know, depending on the building, it could it would vary. But, you know, we have an obligation from our perspective to maintain that area to something we would want to see. We're talking about a public safety building there, and so we wouldn't want to necessarily have the county sell an old EMS building to somebody else to do something that would be inconsistent with what our use is. So that was kind of the the thought process there. So what we proposed to them and what they talked about at today's commission meeting was a a sale of that for a dollar with the first right of refusal. You know, obviously, we lose out on on the $40 or the $39 revenue over those years, but that's not a huge piece of the puzzle. You know, it's a situation where I don't I don't know that they're quite sure what size they need. And so there was some discussion today about, you know, is a third of an acre enough? And, you know, what what we'll do and what we've offered to do is to continue working with Travis Parmley, who's the EMS director, to figure out what exactly they need. This this property is actually in the land bank. So as far as what what impact that has, you know, Lou and I, as the treasurer and and the chairman of the land bank, have the authority to sell those things. Obviously, we want to make sure that it's okay with everybody else on the city council and the land bank and as land bank board too. So that's kind of where we're at tonight. You know, we also talked about doing some site prep for them, utility connections. And then the building apron, so the approach apron coming off of Ash Street was also part of that. We're working with some pretty rough estimates. We don't really know exactly what we're talking about as far as what all that is. But potentially 50 to 70,000, we think, as far as what our obligation would be for that project. And a lot of that is in kind, hopefully, in cash service. I think we have the ability to to do some of that land prep, and we definitely can do the utility hookups ourselves. So there's a little bit of cost in there. And if you want to factor in our time and everything, that would be kind of where we think it would be. So what we would like to do is is get some approval from from the city council. Also, technically, the land bank board to move forward with continuing to negotiate with the county on this and working with them so that we can make sure this EMS facility is is something that is consistent with what we want. And we feel like is the best for for Marion County as far as a response to. So that's kind of where we're at on it. Lou, I don't know if you have anything you want to add with that.
Yeah, I I would just I would just add, you know, people might say, well, why would the city want to do this? Well, there's there's two overarching reasons. Number one, we want we want it located in the right place. And we, Bert, believe firmly that that is the right place for that type of a service operation. This that location has been surveyed for a long time by our own fire chief. And he's done a lot of work in terms of figuring out how long does it take to get to anywhere within the city limits of Hillsborough from there. And that is the most efficient location to locate that that type of facility in terms of getting where they need to be. It also is the safest on and off entrance off of Ash Street onto US 56. It is not as it it is safer than than industrial road. It's safer than Orchard Drive there by Sonic by quite a bit, we believe. So it also accesses our nursing home facilities on on South Ash Street. It also gets them around town, gets them out of town, serving members of the county. So we also, the second reason is that we feel like there's value in having these services located together. There's been a reason the ambulance has been in our fire station for who knows how many years now. There is a benefit in terms of communication and in interaction between all of our emergency services personnel. And as I think many of you are aware, Hillsborough has a longstanding tradition of supporting the ambulance service with volunteer EMTs and and people to support the ambulance. So and that will continue going forward. Talking with Chief Steckety, he has assured me that we will continue to maintain our position in support of Marion County EMS in that regard. So if the ambulance is out, we will continue to offer first responding service here in Hillsborough and to the surrounding areas. So I think there's there's a lot of value. It's also, let's face it, it's the approach into the main approach into our city. And I think we the message that we want to send to people coming to Hillsborough is is that we're investing in those kind of infrastructure pieces that are important to people and public safety in healthcare is a huge, huge thing that people are concerned about when they're looking at at a community. And so having that there, you know, very visible on our main approach, I think there's value to that as well. That's that's all I would add. Are there any questions for Mr. Styles or for me?
Could could you guys talk about the financial impact that they if they were to buy the Dollar General building?
Well, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead, Matt. No, go ahead.
So that it is right now, it's an interesting situation. That property has been deeded over to a non for pro not for profit charity foundation, presumably for a tax write off, but they still actually pay the taxes on it. And so it's about $8,500 a year, I think, is what they paid last year under protest. So there's, you know, there's a there's an actual property tax issue there. Probably the bigger thing, though, is the loss of a potential retailer business. I mean, it's a it's a viable building for retail. It's about 8,200 square feet. So, I mean, it's a situation where if if we're out looking for retailers, you know, we we got a home for them right there. And, you know, it mixes better from a retail perspective if we can bring somebody in for that. So, you know, financially, from a long term standpoint, it would be a situation where you could potentially lose out on a retailer there. You know, who knows exactly what that impact is, but it's it's more, you know, future impact as far as what it could be. So that, you know, and I I think it also, not not that it would be a negative if it were to be located there for other things to recruit in. But I think you lose some of the advantage of of bringing in another retailer. Because when you have multiple retailers or restaurants in one location, it kind of has a stickiness to it. It's attractive. People want to, you know, come there. It's why when you go on the highway, you see multiple restaurants by the same by each other in a in a stop on a on a rest stop area. It just adds more business and, you know, it doesn't really cannibalize them. It increases everybody's share of it. So, you know, having that and taking it off the rolls for for a public purpose, you know, while it's still good to keep the ambulance service there, it is a potential loss of of revenue and then also the the tax dollar revenue too. So one of the things they did talk about with this with the Dollar General building is they would potentially be bringing in the health department as well. So moving some of the health department offices in here, which would be a great service to add to Hillsborough. I mean, I think that would be wonderful to have of health department services here too. But again, I don't know that it's it would justify taking it off the tax rolls and removing it as a potential option for retail in the future.
Is there any zoning issue?
No, technically, they can put a an ambulance service in there. The that highway access zone is is the same type of zoning which the hospital was in too. So it would be a situation similar to that. It's an acceptable use. It's just, you know, is that the the best and highest use of that property?
Sure. Okay.
You know, and and to that point, I think it I think it bears stating that rather than, you know, approach the county saying, we don't, you know, we don't want you taking property off the tax rolls. We're we're saying we want to collaborate. We want to work with you. And here is where we believe a better location for it. It also allows you to design a building that's specifically to that purpose. So they get to design it to be exactly what it what it should be, which is an ambulance station and kit it out and and equipped appropriately. And it's it's again, it it at the right spot, you know, cooperating with our emergency services. And, you know, my hope is that in the next four to five years, we'll be able to to do something ourselves up there. So but I think this this will certainly not hurt that by any means. And they're very anxious to get their project underway. And so this this allows us to let that happen, but do it in a way that that we're participating in. We're cooperating with the county and collaborating. And, you know, it's important to the county. It's important to the city of Hillsborough. Yep.
Since I've been on the council, which has been a couple of days now, I always thought that would be the best place to have our emergency building was right there where where the county wants to go. And I think that all the firemen would agree with that because it has access to everywhere. And I think it'd be good for the county if they could build that building there instead of buying Dollar General. I really do.
We certainly we we certainly believe that and I firmly believe that that's the right thing to do. And again, rather than just try to throw our weight around, you know, what we're trying to do is show our willingness to work with the county to collaborate, to work in everybody's best interests. And I hope that you all see it the same way.
Yeah, I think we should work with the county, but that is a good spot there.
Any other comments or questions? Is this the time we need to take action or do we reserve that for the land bank meeting, Mr. Styles?
You can take it now or at the land bank meeting. You know, basically, we're just asking for a blessing to to continue working with the county. So the money for the project, if if we get into a situation where we're going to be paying, we're going to be paying for concrete for sure if this goes forward. So that would more or less land on the city side of the house and not so much on the land bank side. So I think it's probably best to have that transaction or that blessing occur here because we're talking about different buckets of dollars here.
Okay. Would somebody care to make a motion that would allow the city administrator and myself to continue negotiations with the county? Ambulance ambulance facility to be located off Ash Street near Third Street?
I'll make that motion.
Councilman Garing moves. Councilman McCarty seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. We will now move into a public building commission meeting to consider an invoice from boats construction company. And I will turn the floor over to Councilman Lowen.
I now call the meeting of the Public Building Commission to order. We have minutes that have been passed out or has everyone had a chance to read those? Does anyone care to make a motion pass to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Got a motion as second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, those minutes are approved. You have a invoice from boats construction company. Matt, do you have any comment about that?
Yeah, so this was part of our work on the project or on the old hospital to do to prepare it for Tabor's potential use of it. So you kind of see there that it was Rusty Allen and Terry Enns from Tabor College who ordered it, but it was in in consultation with us on this. So this was to put the fire doors on the sides of the building so that when we separated from Salem Home, we were able to have proper fire exiting, which is it's a really good investment for us from the perspective on the hospital overall. Originally, we were planning on putting all this in with Sparks money. There was, you know, Tabor ordered it. So is it Tabor's to put in or is it ours to put in? We we're ending up with it and it's probably appropriate for us to have it. It wasn't included in our original Sparks application, but we would retain it and and submit that for additional funding if and when the federal government approves any additional aid for COVID related expenses. So until that point, we do need to get it paid. I would say that there is a a potential project working with the hospital right now. We're we've been working as a community in a community group about childcare. And one of the things that we're evaluating is the old hospital space. And they're at the point now where they're actually having KDHE come in to to help look at the space to see if it would be suitable for a daycare facility. There specifically, they're looking at the west wing, which is one of those hallway hallway rooms that is served by one of these doors. If these doors weren't here, we wouldn't be able to to do that type of project. So from that perspective, it's been a good investment. It gives us a lot more flexibility with it. And I think eventually, we're going to see some pretty good use out of this building. Hopefully, put it back to some productive use and and take care of a couple of different things in their community that we need. So I would recommend paying paying the invoice on this. I know it's it's always tough to spend money on the old hospital, but I think this is a good investment for the future of it.
So I would entertain a motion to approve payment of this invoice for $7,000, $7,176. Anyone care to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Hey, we have a motion. Hey, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
One second.
Okay, have a motion as second. Is there any further discussion? Any questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. That takes care of all of our business as a. And as above Public Building Commission, I now call the. Return the meeting back to the City Council. We adjourn.
Thank you, David. Now back in the City Council meeting and we're going to move immediately to a land bank annual meeting. And I will turn it over to Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So I sent out this afternoon a spreadsheet and. It kind of lists out all the property that we've put into the land bank. And so. Hopefully had a chance to, to get that. I apologize for not having it out. I had to make a few adjustments to it here. This morning. So we've got, right now, we've got sixty-six properties listed into the. Into the land bank. And so that has a, a, a valuation value of one point four million dollars. On the final column there, you can kind of see the sale price we have for all those properties, which is part of. What you have to do in order to have them into the land bank. So they're all listed. With all the vacant ground that you see in Willow Glen and Hillsborough Heights, we've got a formula that we use for that. Ten thousand dollars an acre, which has been the asking price on the open market. So. When we have a certain amount of, of property, we just basically multiply it out. And so that's how you get the purchase price. We've also assigned some. Some of the property, you know, we have property in the hospital, for example. And we use a similar formula for that. But with like the buildings, we have the old hospital. And so we put a commercial value on that. You know, it's, it's valuation is nine, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, but. We put a purchase price, working with Anthony, Anthony and I put a purchase price on that of five hundred thousand. We can definitely change that if you feel like that's under value. AMPI, we also put, we put a price on that of one point five million. The valuation on it is a hundred and twenty-two thousand. If somebody came in and offered one point five million, we would sell it in a heartbeat. Probably a lot less than that, honestly, if they came in and wanted to purchase it. We also have the, the Ram Manufacturing, the old post office building. That's one that have, just came into the land bank that was donated earlier this, or late last year, I should say. The valuation on that's forty-four thousand, but we've put a price tag of sixty thousand on that. And I will say we actually have somebody looking at that tomorrow. So it's a potential use there or a potential sale of that property there. And so that's kind of the financial piece of it where we're at. We, we don't really have any liquid cash. We also don't really have any liabilities with it. We just have the assets as far as what the valuation of those assets is. So. If we were to sell everything in the land bank at the price listed here, we'd be at three point two million, a little over three point two million. So. If anyone wants to make an offer, we would listen, I guess, is what I would say with that. The other piece of the, well, I guess that's, that's the annual review of it. We've got this VIVE proposal that we need to discuss as well. That also has to do with the Ram Manufacturing Building. So that, that's all I have for the annual review. We, we really don't have a ton in there since it just started. So. When we get to next year's review, we'll have a lot more data as far as what we can present to you. So. And we also have.
Okay, so did everyone copy of the minutes of the last land bank meeting? Were there any questions regarding the minutes? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
I'm making a motion.
Second, Councilman McCarty moves. Councilman Lowen seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, minutes are approved. Is there any other action before the land bank, Mr. Styles?
Yeah, we've got this proposal from VIVE, which is Eagle. They've got, in, in the old post office building, there is a cabinet. It's fiber, well, not fiber optic, but a, a switching place for Eagle. Telecommunications equipment. We've got, we also have one in the, the old hospital for that matter. But this, when we inherited this building, we inherited that too. So there's currently a lease on there of where the provider, you know, Eagle or VIVE in this case. Would provide, I think it's a hundred and fifty dollars of cash rent and then free internet service. Roughly the equivalent of three hundred dollars a month. For the use of the space. They're trying to move out of those, those arrangements. And so what they've proposed and what you have here is a survey. For them to move that facility out of the building and move it on to this, this section of property here. It's about six hundred. Six hundred and twenty-five square feet. It's a twenty-five by twenty-five section. That's right in the corner of that property. You can kind of see, but. From the survey there, I had, I had them survey because it was, it's in an alleyway with a lot of. Utilities in it. And so I was really concerned that we weren't going to run into. Some, some issues with if we either wanted to grant them an easement or if we wanted to sell this property to them. So. You can kind of see, you know, up at the top, there's the water line that runs there. There's a gas line that runs through there. There's a sanitary sewer line that goes there. And there's also. The new fiber project runs through there too. So. We've got to make some kind of decision as to what you would like to do with this. Request from them. So they're requesting, I, I would assume they would like, like it to be granted to them as an easement, but. You know, it could also be a situation where you just sell them that chunk of property that's six hundred and twenty-five square feet. Completely up to you guys as the land bank board. I honestly don't have a, a recommendation one way or the other as to what, either an easement or, or this, an outright sale. An outright sale probably makes the most sense. Then, you know, how do you value six hundred and twenty-five square feet? So.
I, I have a question, Mr. Styles.
Yes.
Did I, did I understand you to say that the current fiber project runs across that property?
Well, it runs parallel into that area in the alleyway easement. It doesn't run in that six hundred and twenty-five square feet.
It would not be part of that six hundred and twenty-five square feet.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess one concern I'd have is, is if somebody were to want to buy the Ram building. Would having this chopped off? Hurt that value?
Yeah, that's a valid consideration. I mean, right now, there's not much. There in that corner. The parking lot's not there. It's, it's ground, basically. But yeah, anytime you kind of section off a piece, it, it could impact the, it could impact the sale value.
What does it look, what are they putting on? What does it look like?
It'd be a pedestal type cabinet. So it, it would blend in with any other utility you would see.
I didn't know if it was like a little building like the one that we just. Had with, with the fiber project.
No, no, it's not a central office type situation. It's more or less a switching area for them. The other thing to consider is that, you know, in moving it out, you know, there, there is a lease that's binding there right now. So. Somebody was to go and buy that property and move in there, they would inherit that lease. So. You know, they may want to keep it in the building for that matter. You know, you get a little bit of revenue from it and, and potentially free internet. So. You know, that would be something to consider as well.
How long's that lease for?
It's, well, yeah, that's a good question. I don't actually have the lease documents. I've made a couple of requests for that, but I haven't seen them yet. So. I think they were hoping to, to make, have us have a decision on this too. So.
Because that would be the end of the land bank as it currently stands?
What's that?
That lease would be money into the land bank as it currently stands?
Correct. We obviously wouldn't benefit from the, the portion of it where it's, you know, free internet, but. Yeah, the cash part. So your options with this would be to either grant them an easement, to sell the property or to deny the request. So if you denied it, it basically stays where it's at. You know, we do have somebody looking at it tomorrow. I think a fairly serious, seri- serious inquiry. You know, and it could transfer to them and they could deal with it and make a decision on it. Or you could act as a land bank now and, and, you know, make that easement or, or that sale. So it's, it's within your right to do those things.
My suggestion is that we wait till at least you have the conversation with the interested party. Not to, I mean, the last thing you'd want to do is throw a barrier up to an interested party.
Yeah, I think that, that's probably. Probably a good decision with something like that.
I would, I would suggest, Matt, that maybe we would just defer action on this for, let's just say thirty days. Until we know where the interested party may or may not be. And we also have the opportunity to have a physical copy of the lease. To review. And so that would be my recommendation that we just defer taking any action for thirty days.
I think that would be a wise decision.
Would somebody care to make that motion?
I will.
We defer. This issue for thirty days.
Okay, thank you, David. Is there a second? Okay, Mr. Councilman Trigger, seconds. As we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. This matter is deferred for thirty days. Is there any additional business that needs to come before the land bank?
No, sir.
Okay, then I will adjourn the meeting of the land bank and we will. Move back into our city council meeting. There are no board appointments tonight, but we do have. Extensive city administrators report, so I'll let Matt get to it.
Yeah, so I wanted to follow up on the solar questions that we had at the last meeting. Mr. Horst was in from King Solar and. We talked about, you know, having a, an adopted policy in place in thirty to sixty days. Well, the good news is we actually have a policy in place. April seventh of last year, you guys adopted the, a policy for net metering and parallel generation as well as a rate rider on that. So. You're actually in pretty good shape with that. We were able to, to pass that on to them and they seemed pretty satisfied with that. It's actually. Pretty much exactly what Mr. Horst talked about in the. In the meeting as far as sort of splitting the difference. It's not exactly the most. It, it, it's a good balance between protecting our interest and, and allowing for solar projects to recoup their financing or their, their funding on it. So. I think we're, we can check that one off the list. We've already got it. I, I would chalk that up to us not. Not remembering doing that because there was a heck of a lot going on in April of, of two thousand and twenty. So. We've got that in place and we don't have to worry about moving forward on that one. There may be some future questions about that, but. We may have to make a couple of decisions on as far as rates go with that too. There's maybe a few open questions there, but as those come up, we'll bring those to the council. Countryside Feed is doing an expansion. So there's a big expansion. We'll be hearing an application for a tax abatement from them in February. I had Anthony kind of write up a little summary of, of what the project is. So. It's an eight point two million dollar capital project. They're going to be retrofitting a lot of equipment in their facility and expanding their footprint. So there's actual building involved with that too. What you would be talking about for a tax abatement purposes would be any actual physical expansion of the facility. Expecting to do seven new jobs and that's over a couple of different years. There's a few different things with that. So that, you know, that would be a really nice expansion. It's a great project. And we've got. They're also going to be changing up the traffic flow there on that property as well. So I know that's been an issue that people have talked about. The idea, it looks like to me is that they're becoming off of industrial road and being able to pull through the facility using the old Reynolds plant there. So that should increase safety once they, they can exit on the Santa Fe then. So it should be a, a really nice, really nice project. We'll have more interests or more information on that as, as it comes up. And I don't know if. We did have somebody on here, Brandon, I think is on here. From Countryside Feed. If Brandon wants to talk about the project, welcome to have that.
Yeah, good evening, gentlemen and ladies. If you have any questions, I, I do have a little bit of a, of something that our engineering company set up, if I can share my screen here. And kind of give you an idea of what we're looking at and just, it's, it's just what they call a flyover. Also have Dave Verethman, our CEO. I believe he's on the call as well. So. Any questions that you might have, we can, we can sure address and answer.
Yeah, I'm on here too. Good evening, everybody. Brandon, I think your camera's off. So I'm not sure you're going to be able to share your screen without turning that on.
Okay, let me, let me try to figure this one out here. We're working on being able to share that for you. Okay. So you should be able to share your screen now, Brandon.
All right. Can you guys see that?
Yes.
Sorry about that. So this will be, the, the orange, this is fifty-six and then that'll. Coming off of industrial there. Will be coming across that property. So all the, all the, all the traffic will be routed. We'll do outbound. Off of, it, it'll come through off of Santa Fe and then. Exit off, off of industrial and then all the inbound will be coming. Off of industrial. And so all the trucks that you typically see lining up. Will now line up on, on the property instead of having overflow onto Santa Fe Street and onto the city streets. You, as you look here, some of the expansion, the, the, the orange stuff that you see up there is, is part of our phase two. But as Matt alluded to, we, we will be adding, we'll be retrofitting a, a lot of new equipment, new processes. We will be adding. An expansion. Back here, this, this new building. Will be our grinding mix annex. We will be adding that on. We'll also have some of our, our new packaging equipment as well. Just kind of a, a, a brief overview of that. I, I have some additional stuff if you guys want to look at it, which just. Still shots of, of, of some of that, but that was just a, a kind of a brief flyover. I would answer any questions that you had on any of that.
Brandon, the, the trip that the trucks would be taking, is it behind the existing building, the old Reynolds building you have?
It, it, it's to the front.
To the front of that?
Just to the front of that.
Or is fifty-six from that?
Yes. Yes. The, the, the plan is to cut that. We, we, we're more than likely looking at taking the old office part of that off since. We lost that, you know, we lost the roof several years ago. That's. That's kind of been in disrepair. That, that front office building, we, we didn't do much with it. After the tour of the roof off. So we're, we're probably more than likely looking at tearing that off as we're, as we're doing the groundwork. And. And, and taking some of those trees out and it's going to be a straight shot. Pretty much with just a little jog over to our, our. Loading out, load in and out facility there on the, on the south side there. Guys have any questions on that? Any questions on the expansion that I can answer? Dave, is there anything that you want to speak to on that?
It's a pretty significant project, pretty significant investment in the in the countryside, in the Hillsborough. I think it'll be an improvement to the industrial park. As you look at the the picture there, there there a taller gray tower kind of in the center, that will be new construction. Those will be additional loadout bins for us. The structure will be a little bit taller. But there will be a a sizable annex on the west side that will house our new packaging line. And again, as Brandon said, this is phase one. The the things in orange are are things we we plan to add in the next till three to five years as we phase into this project. But I think the traffic flow redirection will alleviate a lot of congestion on Santa Fe there. We recognize that that's just really not the safest, safest area with all the the truck traffic, the marketing and ourselves and the and the trucks that the in in traffic that go through there. So again, two-way traffic across the product or excuse me, across the the property. We'll we'll split that load, make it much safer. We won't be turning back on ourselves from a traffic standpoint. I think the neighbor will be a lot happier with that arrangement.
And 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 as Matt alluded to, you know, we're going to be adding jobs. We're 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 always trying to capture additional market share and and and, you know, and our 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 goal is to become the, you know, the regional statewide feed supplier for 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 Kansas. So, you know, we we continue to to grow and expand and 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 this is just one of those first steps into into making that, you know. We've had to get twenty years here and we're looking for the to set ourselves up to grow and expand for the next twenty years.
Something the council may not be aware of, Brandon, I'm sorry, this is this Dave. You know, our our trade territory includes the the entire state of Kansas, Oklahoma, Texas, Colorado, Nebraska, Missouri, Arkansas. So we have a pretty far reach even now that Hillsborough facility and we're looking to expand that. And this expansion project will will allow us to to do that and and also replace other manufacturing that's at end of life, that quite likely won't be repaired to replace as we go forward. So there will be a need for additional manufacturing to to service the livestock industry in these ag ag areas.
Gentlemen, on behalf of the city of Hillsborough, I I want to thank you for your partnership for all the years that you guys have have been operating here to the benefit of the community. And we appreciate it and we couldn't be more excited to to work with you on this expansion project. And, you know, whatever we can do to help will certainly be seriously considering the the tax abatement request. And we know that 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 that's part of part of this conversation. And we look forward to to addressing that when it's ready to bring brought before the council. We are also, as I'm sure you're aware, that the the that intersection at fifty-six and industrial road will be improved in the coming years. So I'm not sure how that is going to dovetail with your plans, but hopefully it will even make that even safer than it than it currently is on that industrial road where we increase the 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 on-ramp or off-ramp, if you will, at that location on the south side. So we've got to make that safer.
That's actually one of the things we took into consideration when when routing it that way. We, I I I had talked to some of the city workers a about that as a as a future project that you guys had in your coffers.
That'd be wonderful. We look forward to working with you guys. We appreciate your time tonight and your consideration. And if you have any questions at all, reach out to Brandon or myself. He can get you in touch with me and thank you for your time.
Absolutely.
Again, again, gentlemen, thank you. And we're excited about your expansion and again, excited to work with you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Any other questions? All right. We'll leave you to it, guys.
Okay, have a good evening.
You too.
Okay, so we're going to be working through the abatement process. We actually, it was a little bit of confusion as to what our policy was with that, but we actually have a pretty robust policy on that. And so we're we're going to be working that and and bringing that up to you here. There there's a couple of different things that have to happen with the tax abatement. It's a fairly well-regulated piece of constitution, Kansas State constitutional law. So we'll be working through that, though. It should be good. Strategic plan, that's another thing we're going to be picking up. We started started early last year in twenty twenty and with COVID and everything else that was happening, it kind of got pushed to the back burner. But we're going to pull that up to the front burner and get it done so that we can finish up and get to work on that plan. In kind of looking at some of the notes, we we've had a pretty good head start on some of those things as far as things that needed to be worked on. So I'll look forward to to having a session on that. My staffing plans, I I originally thought maybe the first meeting in in February, that still may be the case. But I think we've got a few issues that we have to kind of sort through with some personnel things. So we'll be bringing that to you in in the second meeting in February, if not sooner. Community childcare, we talked about that. So that's a really cool project as well. That's that's something that could potentially be really good for the community. We're talking about the west wing of the old hospital, but there's also opportunity for other things in there. I know they've talked about co-locating some other services in there that kind of relate to childcare, countywide services. So it it's really, it's been a really good profitable kind of fruitful partnership, maybe not profitable, but fruitful partnership. And I think we can address a lot of issues and and continue to to move forward on that. The Fairgrounds Building, that's one of the other projects we've been kind of working on. I I touch base with those guys fairly regularly about that. They're still kind of working through some of their issues. They still plan to come and talk to us about alcohol in those facilities and potentially talk about HVAC things. So they're still working on it and that's that's where it's at. I've offered my assistance and they've taken me up on it a couple of different times, but they're still kind of working on their finalized plan. Update on the fiber optic project, so that after we kind of had a holiday lull, they they've ramped back up and we've been seeing, you know, of course, several several locates today, up to fifty, sixty locates a day from our utilities. I'm I'm happy to report that we, you know, you have three days to do a locate and oftentimes we're finished in one. So we've stayed on top of it from our perspective that, you know, we're we're making sure that we're not holding them back in their progress. We've had a few more, we had a few water leaks last week where they've they nicked our lines and it's I it's just part of that process. Thankfully, we didn't have to shut anybody down for too long. We were able to repair those pretty quickly on site. So it it seems to me that they're they're making good headway. If you look at kind of their layout plan and where they're working at, I'm not sure if they're exactly on schedule. But the engineering services did tell me that they would be, they pretty well wrapped up in April, which is where they said they would be. The the thing that we're anxiously awaiting is them for to light up that fiber because we're in we're in the first phase of that and I would love to be able to have fiber optic here in this building. We've got it all set up and we don't have it live yet. So looking forward to that. It just kind of continues moving forward. The twenty twenty year in review, Jan completes that. It's a list of the activities the city completed in in twenty twenty. So I've got that there for you to to look back through. Harrington Municipal Hospital, the Hillsborough Clinic, I had a conversation with the CFO, Brian Coffey, about their decision. So what they have to do, just so everybody's aware, they have to enclose the building envelope. When we talk about a code enforcement perspective, the building envelope has to be secure and and weather tight. So right now they're working on putting a roof on a part of the building, so they have to finish that up. They have to put some kind of siding on it. It can't be a blight to the neighborhood and and just having tieback on it would be considered a blight to the neighborhood. They're kind of going back and forth as to what they're going to do with the frontage, if they're going to do the full installation of all the of the glass and, you know, the things that they originally planned. Not sure if they'll they'll get to that piece of it, but again, the the key there is that it can't be a blight to the community. And the building permit, which we've issued them, was based on a set of plans. And so they have, they can't really deviate too much from those plans. They can stop short of completely doing some of that project, but it has to be in a safe and a reasonable condition. So that's kind of where it's at, you know, it's they're they're going to be seeing patients through the end of April at at the part that's open now. I think they're optimistic that there may be a legislative change on that. But I'm not sure, you know, that it kind of depends on who you talk to and the day you talk to about what kind of the long-term outlook is for that or what the long-term plan is. They don't really have they don't have an immediate plan other than to continue seeing patients through April. So I'd also note that I talked with Mark Rooker, who's the CEO of our hospital, the community Hillsborough Community Hospital out here. And, you know, Harrington cited this change in the legislation. It does not impact the Hillsborough Community Hospital. We're a critical access hospital. The legislative change impacted new rural health clinics, which we don't have. So this does not affect our hospital and doesn't put them in any financial jeopardy. As far as our hospital goes, the the Hillsborough Community Hospital, it looks to be in good shape financially, providing good quality service. All signs are are positive. As far as we know, they're making all their payments to us. So I think everything, you know, as as Mark has said, is is moving forward in a very positive way. So we still have quality healthcare in in Hillsborough. The community hospital does an outstanding job and will continue to do so despite Harrington's clinic being shut down. So there's nothing to worry about on that perspective. And I can answer any questions you may have about that. I don't know if I have a lot of insight as far as what Harrington is doing or any of that, but I can tell you what I've been told. Well, if you if you have any more questions about that, I'd I'd be happy to try to find you an answer for them. But otherwise, that that is all I have today, Lou.
Okay, well, that's a long list. And and as I was looking through the twenty twenty year in review, I'm always amazed at how much stuff we actually, we actually tackle as a city council. And I'm not patting ourselves on the back. It's just a lot longer list than 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 you would think about, you know, once you accumulate twelve months, especially in the year of twenty twenty where we've dealt with so many COVID-related things. So I'm optimistic about this year of twenty twenty-one. There's a lot of positive things going on in our community, not the least of which we talked to business owners doing a major business expansion in our community that that speaks of the value that that this community brings in terms of long-term investment because they're investing a lot of money that that's going to take some time to to recoup. But they have confidence in this community and and I think that speaks well of the city of Hillsborough. So our job, of course, is to continue to do the right things, to make Hillsborough an attractive place to live, to to for people to to want to be part of our community. And I'm excited about this year and, you know, we still got challenges, of course. But I think we've proven in twenty twenty that we were up to the challenge and I believe we're going to continue to be up to the challenge. So I'm bullish on twenty twenty-one. Is there any other business that needs to come before the council? Hearing none, meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. Appreciate everybody's participation.